Good morning. My name is Justin Jackson and I serve as Executive Director for the Community Development Administration. I'm here today along with CDA Director of Administration and Compliance, Taiyo Afuape. And we welcome you to the public hearing of the 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPR. This is a draft version of this report that is to be submitted to HUD at the, excuse me, submit to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development at the end of the month, March 31st. And it is a summary of information of all activities performed in 2021 by HUD formula grant recipients. So as an entitlement community under classification by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, the City of St. Louis receives annual funding allocations from the federal government to fund activities that address community needs. Additionally, as a funding recipient, the City of St. Louis is required to submit to HUD Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPR, that describes how the city utilized federal funds over the prior year. The city's lead agency responsible for submission of this plan to HUD is the Community Development Administration. At this time, I'm going to share my screen. So I mentioned this briefly earlier, but this report summarizes the activities and services in the program year 2021 that were made possible by funding received through HUD for four specific formula grant programs. Those programs are the Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDBG, Home Investment Partnership, or HOME, the Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, or HAPW. Much like all the other areas in our society today, our 2021 program year was affected due to the ongoing uncertainty of the COVID-19 pandemic. Despite circumstances, however, adjustments were made and the best possible efforts were given to continue operating in 2021 to ensure that CDA and others continues its mission of promoting neighborhood growth and stabilization through community development. In accordance with HUD regulations, CDA makes available several documents for public review, including the consolidated plans, annual action plans, and the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report. Please note that upon final submission, the final version can be found on the Community Development Administration website, which is www.stlouis-mo.gov backslash CDA. We encourage you to periodically check the CDA website for news as well as updates. I'll briefly go over today's agenda. I just went over the purpose of today's public hearing. But I'm going to expand on that a little bit more. And then following that, I'll give a overview of citizen participation that was conducted for the CAPR, as well as an overview of the entitlement programs associated with one of the grant funding. I'll then get into an overview of CDBG and HOME, specifically the budget summary and CDA accomplishments, and a table of assistance that indicates the funding source received and where those funds went. I will also give a brief summary of ESG information, as well as HAPW information and efforts for 2021. And then after that, we will allow for any public comments. So the purpose of today's public hearing is to receive feedback regarding the 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPR, draft, by allowing for the views of citizens, public agencies, and other interested parties to be heard. So we will provide a summary of funding utilized and services provided for HUD formula grants in the 2021 program year. The Community Development Block Grant Funding, or CDBG, which is administered by the Community Development Administration. The Home Investment Partnership Funding, which is administered also by the Community Development Administration. The Emergency Solutions Grant, which is administered by the Department of Human Services. Then Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, which is administered by the Department of Health. And all of these departments are departments within the City of St. Louis. This is really to give the public an opportunity to comment on our CAPR draft report, which has been posted, which was posted and made available to the public on March 16th. Onto citizen participation. So CDA encourages citizen participation at all stages of the funding process. This includes citizen involvement in identifying needs, setting priorities among these needs, deciding how much money should be allocated to each high priority need, suggesting the types of programs to meet high priority needs, and overseeing the way in which programs are carried out. Generally, this occurs during the development of the consolidated plan and annually during the annual action plan. And then lastly, with the completion of the CAPR report. As I mentioned earlier, a draft version of the 2021 CAPR was made available for review on March 16th, 2022, on the City of St. Louis website at www.stlouis-mo.gov backslash CDA, as well as at the offices of the Community Development Administration located at 1520 Market, Suite 2000. Advertisements indicating the availability of the draft report and the dates of today's public coming, public hearing appeared in the St. Louis American on March 17th, 2022. This notice was also emailed to interested parties via our CDA distribution list and anyone who requested the respective draft of the CAPR. Below is a specific link again that takes you directly to the draft CAPR. Again, when you go on the CDA website, we archive all of our documents for record-keeping purposes and we place the CAPR draft on the website underneath the Documents section. And upon final upon finalizing the draft, we will this is where we will also place the final version, the final submitted version of the CAPR that is submitted to HUD. We will place that in that same area. I want to give a brief overview of the entitlement programs that are funded. CDBG funds may only be used for activities that fulfill at least one of three national objectives to be of benefit to persons of low and moderate income, the elimination of slums and blight, and/or responding to an urgent need. HOME funds may only be used to provide housing to benefit persons of low and moderate income. ESG provides homeless persons with basic shelter and essential supportive services, as well as short-term homeless prevention assistance to persons at risk of losing housing. And HAPW provides funding for the housing needs of persons living with HIV/AIDS and their families. Onto CDBG and HOME information. These are the following allocation amounts for the program year 2021. The sum of $18,789,355 was allocated for the Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDPG program for this year. Skipping down to HOME, $2,934,493 was allocated for HOME for the 2021 year. There is a distinction that I would like to make and I will specify this right now. So in 2020, the previous year, additional funding was allocated to CDA directly as a response to the COVID-19 pandemic in two separate allotments. The first allotment was $10,840,586, and then later, an additional $2,390,776 for that total that you see for CDBG CB1 and CB3 that totals $13,231,362. We included this because although this funding was issued in 2020, due to the nature of the pandemic, almost all of those programs and almost all of that funding was carried over to the 2021 program year. So as I make that statement, I will then look at the category where you see amount expended during the program year. This is a culmination of not only 2021 funds expended during the year, but also funds from prior years that were expended as it relates to CDBG HOME and CDBG CB funds. So the amount that we expended in 2021 for CDBG was a little bit over $20 million. $20,232,652 specifically for HOME. We expended roughly over $1.2 million, $1,226,050. And for CDBG CB1 and CB3, the amount expended in 2021 was just under $700,000. And the specific number is $672,808. So we will continue to report on CDBG CB funding this year and more than likely next year as well to those funds which have carried over through the active pandemic years are exhausted. As far as it relates to the table of assistance of racial populations by source of funds, and this specifically relates to CDBG and HOME figures. In 2021, activities implemented with CDBG funds benefited approximately 2,417 individuals. Now, these numbers do not include area benefit activities, which are for activities that benefit an entire neighborhood. But you can see the ethnicity breakdown on the chart above. Majority of the recipients of funds were CDBG, were African-American, followed by white individuals and then Asian, and then a handful of Native American individuals. As far as HOME funds, there was a significantly lesser number of individuals that received assistance, but this is due to the type of assistance provided with HOME funds in terms of actually producing housing and who those houses were produced for. So recipients of HOME funding, African-American individuals, it was 18, and white Caucasian individuals, it was six. But the total activities implemented with CDBG funds again is 2,417 for 2021, for CDBG and HOME. And also the table of assistance to ethnic population by source of funds. We have to make the distinction between Hispanic and non-Hispanic recipients as well. And you'll see that same figure again, that 2,417 individuals served. So non-Hispanic individuals accounted for 2,368 individuals receiving services underneath CDBG and 23 individuals identifying as Hispanic underneath CDBG. And then underneath HOME, none, no individuals identifying under Hispanic received those services. And then 26 non-Hispanic individuals were recipients of those funds. In terms of CDBG areas awarded, in 2021, we, these are the breakdowns of funding that was allocated and to what areas they were allocated to. So there was approximately 3.5 million public services that were awarded after an RFP process and a competitive issuance of a request for proposal by the City of St. Louis. There was a little bit over $1 million in interim assistance provided. That's followed up with approximately $250,000 in low to moderate homeowner assistance funding. As it relates to home repair, and this is a significant area that requires a little bit more funding, so 4.5 million was awarded in home repair funds for 2021. Housing production, which tends typically to be the primary area of focus for our CDBG and HOME funds in the City of St. Louis, was allocated approximately 6.2 million. $310,000 was allocated for commercial district public improvements, as well as $565,000 in economic development. $352,000 was allocated towards public improvement and roughly over $1 million was also allocated towards rehabilitation administration. And then lastly, about 3.7 million was allocated towards total planning and administration efforts to carry out CDBG and HOME efforts. Some of the accomplishments in 2021. I will start with the Choice Neighborhood Program, which was, it's not a formula grant received from HUD, however, it was a special allocation of HUD funding received a few years ago in partnership with Urban Strategies and McCormick Baron to the tune of roughly $29.5 million to make improvements in a specific area of St. Louis, of the Choice Neighborhood, to revitalize a particular area known as Preservation Square and make updates to and improve the units in that particular area. So this was roughly year four, entering into the latter parts of year three and continuing into year four of this program. The final date for this program is September 2023. Now, activities will be finalized by then, but some of the services that were provided to Preservation Square units are as follows, and over 330 families actively participated in case management. Over 100 people participated in education and youth development programs and about a dozen individuals participated in workforce development and employment training programs to aid with those ongoing efforts as it relates to that grant. As far as CDA, one of the things that we continue to do here in CDA is activities such as what we're doing today is enhanced outreach and citizen participation. In the past, things such as CAPR or any type of public hearing were held in person, but due to the ongoing issues that we have experienced with the COVID-19 pandemic, small gatherings have been, small to medium to large gatherings have been postponed indefinitely, and we have utilized technology to bring virtual hearings or virtual trainings or any type of technical assistance for the community or those receiving funds. We've been able to engage directly with those recipients in those communities and those groups via Zoom and via other virtual avenues to provide that type of assistance. Monitoring for our funded agencies, both programmatic and fiscal, have become a combination of both virtual and physical monitoring visits. So again, utilizing technology as much as we possibly can to continue to administer the grant dollars has been crucial. So as far as public services are concerned, I'm gonna skip back for just a second. Back in 2020, the City of St. Louis received approval for its 2020 to 2024 consolidated plan, which is a five-year plan required by HUD to determine the way in which HUD entitlement funding will be utilized. So year two of this plan was 2021. During the construction of the consolidated plan, which occurred back in 2019, I don't think anyone could have accounted for what occurred with the pandemic. So we mention this because our priorities and our goals at the time that were established in the construction of the consolidated plan were revisited after the pandemic occurred. And fortunately for us in the City of St. Louis, the areas that we wanted to focus on were already areas that were needing assistance. And they gelled well with what was needed during the pandemic. You know, those areas that were hardest hit, of course, they needed more resources, but there was, there was no really major need to change the consolidated plan in terms of the areas that we were focusing on. So CDA staff continued to provide staffing and technical assistance to help navigate not only the process of our annual action plan, but also the dissemination and awarding of funding to applicants who had successfully submitted RFPs to CDA. Well, CDA staff helped ensure that funds were allocated and managed properly to achieve the most benefit for housing and other activities. This is on a programmatic and fiscal level in terms of reviewing activities, ensuring that they were CDBG and/or HOME eligible activities, and doing the proper follow-up in terms of monthly and annual monitoring. And as I mentioned earlier, we continue to conduct our annual request for proposal process for competitive funding that is specifically for our non-housing activity. We administer funding in two different ways, through CDA, through a non-housing competitive application, and then through a NOFA, a Notice of Funding Available for Housing Production Activities. So some of those agencies that were funded underneath public services include Innovative Concept Academy, St. Louis Art Works, Herbert Hoover Boys and Girls Club, Community Health and Partnership Services, continue to provide low and moderate income individuals with healthcare services, health screening, employment connection and mission STL. I provided low to moderate income individuals with job training. And by funding these programs, the city was able to provide direct services to low and moderate income persons to assist with very much vital and community social needs. This next slide speaks to one of the things that I mentioned earlier when we were giving a brief synopsis of the funds received for the program year. In addition to the 21 funds received, I also mentioned about the carrying over of CB funding that was received initially in 2020 for a majority of public services to continue to allow agencies to operate and support individuals in the community who need these services. So the intention was specifically to support public services such as food and nutrition programs early on, as well as food and sanitary access. But as time has gone on, a lot of those funds have continued to be used not only for those purposes, but for other emergency needed public services as well. So back when we initially received that funding, a total of 16 contracts were awarded to 14 agencies as a direct response to the COVID-19 pandemic. This was done via RFP issued in May of 2020. And contracts and services for a majority of those programs have continued not only into 2021, but beyond 2021 as well. Areas of economic development activity through the St. Louis Development Corporation, CDBG funds were issued to fund facade improvements. SLDC continued to evaluate and process applications from a period prior to the pandemic, going back as far as to 2018 and 19 projects that were either underway or in development at or around the time that the pandemic began. And as a result of that, a lot of those projects continued into 2021. Funding was provided for administrative services only to continue to allow the recipients of some of those, or a majority of those facade projects to continue. A variety of factors affected the facade program and other economic development programs, such as supply chain shortages, such as labor shortages, and overall increase in the cost of getting construction projects completed and economic development projects completed. However, those projects were continued in 2021. And for the foreseeable future, those projects through this particular program will continue to be able to utilize formula grant funding. Other areas or other agencies, such as Justine Peterson and the International Institute, provided CDBG funds to assist small businesses through the provision of micro enterprise assistance. And the assistance of small businesses very much continued through 2021, and we expect to continue those types of services in 2022 as well with CDBG and CDBG resources, as well as non-CDBG resources as well. As far as planning is concerned, in 2021, activities supported include the Planning and Urban Design Agency, which is a municipal city agency. And overall, approximately 19% of new CDBG funds received plus program income were obligated for planning and administrative services. Some other areas of accomplishment within CDA include lead hazard reduction. So CDA through our housing side of the department, I remediated 54 units with lead hazard with grant funds. And then 27 additional units were made lead safe through our Healthy Home Repair Program. And lastly, 36 units were made safe by the CDA Residential Development Section, or a total of 117 units remediated and made lead safe in 2021. As far as housing production, 36 affordable-for-sale units were rehabilitated in 2021. There were no new affordable rental units that were constructed due to the ongoing 2019, or excuse me, due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. However, and this is not included on the slide, slide, but in addition to the 36 affordable-for-sale units that were rehabilitated, there were 13 new homes that were constructed also in 2021. So. although that was not included on the slide, there were thirteen new homes constructed in two thousand twenty one. So construction on additional units is expected to increase throughout two thousand twenty two. However, our housing production department has seen a significant delay in multiple areas that were previously mentioned as it relates to labor shortages of kind of available contractors. The increase in the overall costs of overall construction costs has affected the initial estimates that were provided for a lot of housing products. And then supply chain issues with just even receiving materials needed to finalize the construction of homes. So it's, it's, it hasn't completely derailed our housing department, but it hasn't production department, but it has resulted in extended timelines for the completion of a lot of our home repair and housing construction efforts. Despite that, in two thousand twenty one, the Healthy Home Repair Program or HHRP program closed on one hundred and ninety five loans for low to moderate income homeowners. And approximately two point five million in CDBG and home funds were committed to ensure that those that those loans were closed and that those repairs were made. Minor home repairs were also undertaken by in-house work, work crews employed by Harambe Youth Training Corporation, as well as Mission St. Louis. And all of these efforts are provided to existing homeowners to make necessary improvements to keep individuals in their homes and healthy and safe within their homes. Some of the basic requirements of, of that program, uh, which is available to citywide individuals. Uh, you must be a resident of the city. The program is on a first come, first served basis, and typically results in a waiting list. Individuals have to meet HUD's low to moderate income guidelines adjusted by family size, and they must own and occupy the home for at least two years before applying. Homeowners have to be current on homeowners insurance, as well as real estate taxes, and in the event that the supplies your mortgage. We include this information below always in our paper program because our, our home repair efforts receive a lot of attention and receive a lot of interest on an ongoing basis. So we just always include our contact information, which begins with a hotline that we have where we maintain interest and we receive applications and any questions as it relates to the Healthy Home Repair Program. And that number is three one four six five seven three eight eight eight. As it relates to home funding, during two thousand twenty one, there were three hundred and fifty nine units operating under a home regulatory agreement, which is a, an agreement that the city participates in to maintain and identify existing units that may need inspections and or minor improvements for a particular year. So no additional units beyond these units were inspected in two thousand twenty one by CDA staff due to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, we will look to in the future, get back to resuming these types of inspections, but due to safety concerns and limited staff to actually be able to conduct the actual inspections, you have to forego those inspections for this, for the two thousand twenty one year. However, in previous inspections, common issues included in inspection reports are typically missing or chirping smoke alarms, plumbing leaks, improperly vented dryers, dirty HVAC filters, clutter, loose handrails on steps, missing stopbits and gutters, minor drywall damage, tree trimming, and damaged blinds, windows and screens and other minor things to that can typically be a part of or typically be identified in a, in a, in, in inspection. Next, I'm going to go over briefly ESG and HOPA information on behalf of the Department of Human Services respectively and the Department of Health. So the funding award amount in two thousand twenty one for ESG was approximately one million five hundred and seventy one thousand five hundred and ninety one dollars. Funding amounts from prior years are also shown below. And you can see there has been an increase in ESG funding over the years due to the nature of homeless services and the continued need for efforts for the unhoused population. The types of services that are associated with ESG funding are, there are four areas. There's shelter. Typically that consists of emergency shelter, prevention efforts, which are efforts to prevent individuals from becoming homeless. Rapid rehousing, which is for individuals who are experiencing homeless and efforts made to rapidly find housing solutions for those individuals. And then lastly, data collection, which is the collection of vital information from for individuals who are experiencing homelessness, homelessness from start to finish. So the programs that are associated with the data collection are the Institute of Community Alliancees, which is the HMIS League, as well as the Women's Safe House, which focus on a, a specific area of prevention efforts to assist individuals who are experiencing homeless issues. The programs that provided shelter were Gateway one eighty, Peter and Paul Community Services, Our Ladies Inn, St. Martha's Hall, Homeful and City Hope, operate the Biddle Housing Opportunity Center, Covenant House of Missouri, as well as the Women's Safe House. And the total number of persons in households, including adults and children, was approximately fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred individuals who received shelter assistance. As far as rapid rehousing, Gateway one eighty is the provider of rapid rehousing. And this is, they are able to assist adults and children and families who are needing to be connected to the proper housing options in a, in a rapid manner. So there were about thirty one individuals who were assisted through that program. Prevention programs. There's a handful of prevention programs, beginning with Arch City Defenders, the Center for Women in Transition, St. Patrick's Center, Criminal Justice Ministry, United Way two one one, which is the St. Louis Housing Helpline, the Emergency Helpline, and the number of persons in households that were assisted between adults and children is just shy of five hundred individuals. And the totals for all persons served is approximately right at three thousand. So some of those demographics that were broken down were are, are, are as follows in terms of male and female. And those identifying as, as in, in other categories. Age categories also have been broken down to identify individuals under the age of eighteen, between the ages of eighteen and twenty four, and ages over twenty five. So the total demographic collected or of individuals collected was approximately one thousand nine hundred and sixty six individuals. And continuing in two thousand twenty two, I should say continuing, not necessarily coming. But there, there's just gonna be more efforts towards prevention outreach, rapid rehousing and more efforts toward affordable housing, which are just vital areas needed to address individuals who are experiencing homelessness. As far as HOPA, which is the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, which is administered by the Department of Health. The HOPA program's goal is to assist low-income persons living with HIV or AIDS with, with obtaining housing and other supportive services. Many clients have mental illnesses or substance abuse problems that stem from their diagnosis. And stable housing in most cases improves healthcare outcomes and provides clients the ability to have access to HIV medications on a regular basis, leading to viral load suppression, which results in the virus itself virtually being undetected. So HOPA funding for two thousand twenty one, the program was provided funding in the amount two million six hundred and six thousand nine hundred and thirty nine thousand for the following activities. Tenant-based rental assistance, facility-based housing, short-term rental mortgage and utility assistance, supportive services, case management, and housing information services. HOPA activities encompass seven counties in St. Louis City and County, as well as eight counties in Illinois. Those counties are listed below, but you can see that they're a majority of the counties in the metropolitan St. Louis area or the, in the major metropolitan area. Both St. Louis as well as, as extending into Illinois. So the HOPR sub recipients and who they are, um, the city of St. Louis HOPA program allocated funds to the following sub recipients. Doorways, which is an interfaith nonprofit organization, providing housing and supportive services to improve the quality of life and health and those outcomes for people affected by AIDS, as well as Peter and Paul Community Services, which provides housing and supportive services to those who are homeless, especially those who experience mental illness and live with HIV and AIDS. Some of the outcomes for Doorways in two thousand twenty one. Through the Own Home Program, they provide a short-term rental mortgage, utility and deposit assistance to over four hundred individuals who did not have stable housing. And they also provide a tenant-based rental assistance to approximately one hundred and forty five clients. Approximately one thousand six hundred and sixty clients received housing information services. And those clients also receive supportive services from Doorways. And lastly, there was a collaboration with area employers, such as the St. Louis Agency on Training and Employment, or SLATE, and Merz Goodwill to assist clients with gaining employment. Peter and Paul's outcomes were their positive direction of program. One hundred percent of the clients were provided with transitional housing assistance and had access to housing plans or maintaining or establishing stable, ongoing housing. One hundred percent of those clients also completed or updated for budget and substance abuse supportive change recovery plan, and as well as engaged in treatment for their substance use. These clients also needed assistance in gaining other types of access to benefits. So one hundred percent of those clients were able to apply for Medicare, Medicaid, or ACA benefits and were assisted with completion. And lastly, clients, one hundred percent of clients were medication, were medication compliant with staff assistance during the reporting period. So what you're seeing in front of you, twenty four CFR part five seventy four are the regulations that govern, govern the HOPA program and provide information on formula entitlements, competitive grants and use of grant funds, granting and sponsor responsibilities, grant administration, and other federal requirements. At this point in time, if there are any comments or questions on the, on today's information or public, I mean, this is the time that we have allowed for that. And I'm going to stop sharing my screen at this point. I will make a note that all information from today will be shared on the CDA website. Specifically, our presentation as well as other vital documents that I had mentioned in the, in the presentation, such as the final caper draft, or excuse me, the final caper plan will be accessible through the CDA website. I don't see any questions currently. As we have indicated previously, individuals have until today to either submit their questions directly to CDA via email, which is CDBG at stlouis-moga.gov, or they can use this opportunity today as at, at, at this public hearing as the opportunity to voice any questions that they may have. With seeing none, this concludes our public hearing for the two thousand twenty one paper. And thank you again.